I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So, we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So, everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Hall. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council on this fine winter's day. Just to remind, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are privileged to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, kind of a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Tanner, seconded by Councillor McDonald, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. A few announcements off the top. So the first is obviously happy birthday to the town of Bridgewater. I hope people were able to take in some of the celebratory events a few days ago on Saturday. We have more coming up this Saturday. I don't know, Pat, if you want to quickly, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I kind of am, just go over some of the things coming up this Saturday.
Absolutely. So, we're going to have the second day of our two Frost Fair Saturdays this coming weekend. We had about a dozen vendors onsite last Saturday, as well as some live music, so that will run on the 18th this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So we encourage folks to join us there. Bridgewater Transit will also be running free on Saturday, thanks to a sponsorship from the local Kinsman Club. So if you've never been on the bus, this is your opportunity to hop on board, do that, get around town, and stop at the vendor's market and celebrate the Frost Fair.
Fantastic, yes. And it should be not quite as snowing as it is today. Just on that note, again, thanks to the Kinsman Club for sponsoring free transit every Saturday in February. They're also sponsoring a free skate, February 18th, which is Kin Kindness Day. That's at the LCLC. That's from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So again, thanks to the Kinsman Club for sponsoring those two events. Also, you'll note on the town's website, Kin Canada Day, a proclamation for Kin Canada Day, which is February 20th, and Kin Canada Week, which is February 19th to 25th. So again, that proclamation will be posted on the town's website. We generally share it on social media as well. And, yeah, as Patrick said, if you haven't taken the bus, a great opportunity to do it on a Saturday. It's no risk, because it's free, so that's fantastic. Any other announcements from members of council? I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to say, I'm going to talk about this 15-minute city for like five seconds, because I have never had so many emails or questions from people who think that, for some reason, our Smart Cities Challenge win is connected to, well, it is, a conspiracy theory that there's a 15-minute city plan that will prevent people from leaving their community and going further than 15 minutes from the town of Bridgewater. So, I'll say it, I've posted it a couple times, there is nothing like that in the works. There is nothing in our documentation for Smart Cities Challenge that talks about restricting people's movements, or preventing people from going to visit people in other communities. It is simply a planning initiative to try to make services more accessible to people, so that they are within 15 minutes of walking, or biking, or taking a bus, which ironically is exactly what Bridgewater is. We're a small town, pretty much everything in town is available within 15 minutes, but there's no truth to any kind of conspiracy that we're locking down the town or preventing people from moving about, nor is there for any of the Smart City Challenge winners in Canada. But while I normally wouldn't want to address that, it's probably the second highest number of emails I've received since becoming mayor is on this topic. And I don't know where it's coming from. Anyway, just want to put that to bed, because I don't think I'm going to respond anymore, because it's the same answer all the time. So, yeah, fun. Okay, your look is exactly the same, yeah, what I'm thinking. So, I just hope people will do their research, find reliable sources of information, and go from there. All right, we are down to delegations. I don't know if there's any members of the public here that wish to address any matters for council. Not seeing anyone jumping up. We have the minutes of January 30th, 2023 council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Hearing non-council, motion to approve the minutes is circulated. Deputy Mayor Fugier, seconded by Councillor Caldwell, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And we are down to planning items. Municipal planning strategy, amendments to Le Havre Commercial and C2 Zone and Development Agreement for 421 Le Havre Street. Just as our planner is coming down, I just want to remind people that this is like the first step of many steps. Lots of people commenting, some saying, oh, this was already approved. No, it wasn't. I saw some saying, oh, council already turned it down. No, we didn't. So this is the very first time, this is coming before council, and I'm sure Mackenzie will talk about just all the steps that are involved. So this is like the very first step. So, over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll address that quickly. So this is a two-part application for a development agreement amendment, but there is a request to amend the municipal planning strategy as well. So that's what's coming to council tonight, is the request, to gauge council's interest on amending the municipal planning strategy. So, this application was received in December, on December 19th, by Zap Consulting. As I mentioned, it's a two-part application, and the first part is to amend the municipal planning strategy to increase the maximum height allowance on corner lots in the Le Havre Commercial or the C2 Zone through development agreement. And the second part is to then enable substantive amendments to existing development agreements for 421 Le Havre Street. There are actually three development agreements currently on that property, so for substantive amendments, it's more or less a new development agreement, so that's the process that would go, that this would go through. And as I mentioned, this presentation and the associated report is regarding the proposed MPS amendments, as council has to determine if they would like to consider amending the MPS prior to staff working on the amendments or the development agreement. So, the MPS amendments would be to the Le Havre Commercial Zone, as I mentioned. The C2 Zone is located downtown on the east side of the Le Havre River. It's characterized largely by larger format shopping centers or commercial-style plaza development, and the municipal planning strategy states that it's capable of supporting higher-density mixed-use development. So this map shows the town. The dotted orange-yellow line around the edge is the town boundary, and the C2 Zone is shown in pink. Just wanted to show it in context with the rest of the town. The subject property for the development agreement is also highlighted within the C2 Zone. It's numbered there as 421 Le Havre Street. So currently, the C2 Zone permits a variety of commercial uses. They're all listed in the land use bylaw, as well as some institutional developments and multi-unit developments. They're permitted by different processes depending on the gross floor area of the development. And since we're talking about amendments that would be pertaining to developments by development agreement, I'll outline those uses here on the slide. So by development agreement, the C2 Zone permits new commercial developments that are, again, listed in land use bylaw, or additions to them, and new institutional developments, or additions to those, when those buildings are greater than approximately 50,000 square feet. Additionally, multi-unit residential development is permitted by a development agreement when it's greater than 50,000 square feet. Also, only up to a maximum of 30 units per acre, and also where the ground floor building frontage, and more than 50% of the ground floor is used for a commercial use. Additionally, lounges and beverage rooms or additions to those are permitted by DA as well in this zone. So the second part of the application is the substantive amendments to the development agreements for 421 Le Havre Street. The C2 Zone shown here on the map in red, it cuts off a little bit at the top, and you can see 421 Le Havre Street with the dotted yellow line around it. The subject property contains part of the South Shore Centre, or the mall, that's located on the west side of Le Havre Street along the river. It's 15.93 acres, and as you can see, encompasses a lot of the C2 Zone. It's also located within the Le Havre River Development Agreement area, for which there are additional policies and rules that have to be adhered to for developments permitted by development agreement. This property is located near other C2 properties. It's across the river from King Street, which is in the historic downtown commercial, or the C1 Zone, shown on the map in pink. And there's Park Zone and Comprehensive Residential nearby as well. So, as for the proposal for 421 Le Havre Street, currently, the mall or the South Shore Centre is a one-story commercial building. The applicant is proposing to add commercial and residential space, and those additions are proposed to be between one and eight stories in height, so there's some variety. The intention would be to remove some of the middle of the existing building to create access to the river, as well as new underground parking access. And the new commercial space would be located on the back of the building, so along the river rather than along Le Havre Street. And stories two to eight would contain parking, as well as residential units, and they're currently proposing 262 residential units. The applicant is also proposing the addition of a public plaza and a waterfront promenade. So this is an aerial rendering of the proposed development. It illustrates the integration of the proposed additions to the existing building and the surrounding area. You can see how they intend to reactivate the riverside of the building, as well as include a variety of heights with the addition. So as I mentioned, there would be a variety of heights in those building sections. So in order to develop as per their current proposal, MPS amendments for the C2 Zone would be required. These amendments would affect all properties in the C2 Zone, not only 421 Le Havre Street. Currently, the C2 Zone permits commercial and multi-unit residential by development agreement up to four stories, as well as up to six stories on corner lots. And the applicant is requesting an increase in height for multi-unit development by DA on corner lots from six to eight stories. At this time, the corner lots in this zone are the properties with the Atlantic Superstore, the Shell Gas Station, Cleves, and both sides of the South Shore Centre properties, so on both sides of Le Havre Street. And if the amendments were to be made, anytime a new development agreement application is received, they would be reviewed as per the usual development agreement process with the full policy review. However, the amendments would provide the ability to develop up to eight stories, as long as other policies were supported. These municipal planning strategy amendments could be done in a variety of ways, so this could be by increasing the permitted height to eight stories, but it could also include a specific maximum height in feet and meters. It could also include amending the urban design requirements for the C2 Zone to make them stronger, so that if additional height is permitted, there would be stronger design requirements, but more exploration of this is required, as this is based on initial review of the application. So a full policy analysis would be completed for the planning analysis report, and staff would explore what the amendments could look like. Upon initial assessment, the proposed MPS amendments may be supported in policy, so some relevant policies include mixing compatible land uses, encouraging compact development, enabling development of a range of housing, and improving design and appearance of built form. And these policies are relevant to the MPS amendments specifically, not the site-specific development agreement proposal at 421 Le Havre Street. The planning analysis report would include a full policy analysis regarding the proposed substantive amendments to the development agreements, as well as the MPS amendments. So in addition to looking at the town's existing policies to understand if the proposed amendments would be supported, there are some other things to consider as well. So for example, in 2019, the height limit for multi-unit, or 2018 perhaps, the height limit for multi-unit residential development by development agreement was removed in the C1 Zone, so on the King Street side of the river. So now height is not explicitly regulated, rather details such as minimizing conflict between land uses, the urban design requirements, ensuring compact development, improving the pedestrian experience, and improving the design and appearance of built form are analyzed. Height is considered by staff for all development agreement applications. However, when there are no explicit caps to heights and no set rules, there's no ability to deny a proposal solely based on height. But height is one factor in determining compatibility of a development, so staff look at other ways to incorporate proposed developments into the existing area. So staff do recommend that town council direct staff to work on the requested municipal planning strategy amendments to increase the allowable height of buildings on corner lots by development agreement in the C2 Zone. Additionally, staff would then concurrently work on the application to substantively amend the development agreements for 421 Le Havre Street. And just to note, directing staff to work on the amendments would not commit council to anything regarding the proposed development at 421 Le Havre Street, nor did commit council to approving the MPS amendments. And as the mayor mentioned, I will just go over a few next steps. So we are at the initiation report to council, so it is the first step, bringing it forward regarding the MPS amendments. So if staff were directed to continue, the two parts of the application would run concurrently. Staff would schedule a public participation meeting, then bring a planning analysis report to council regarding the MPS amendments and the draft development agreement, followed by two public hearings, from which, if approved, the MPS amendments would be sent to the province for review, and an appeal process would begin for the development agreement.
All right. Questions from members of council?
So Mackenzie, if they were only going to six stories, this would be sort of somewhat a non-issue?
Yeah, so the MPS would support that if it were six stories. So the development agreement would still have to be done, but not the MPS amendments.
Any other questions? This has been very publicly discussed on various social media forums, so, yeah, interesting to hopefully the public participation meeting gets lots of people out, asking lots of questions. The rendering is, talk about activating the river, which is, I think, something we've been trying to do for a long time, as evidenced by the work that was done by the 2012-16 council for the Take Back the River Bank project. So, yeah, interesting. Anyone else with any comments? Councillor Thorburn?
There's always change. Will there be any additions or deletion of parking locations on that lot?
So with the current proposal for 421 Le Havre Street, the parking lot would not change, to my knowledge. There would be additional underground parking. Currently, the proposal is at more than one space per unit for that new underground parking. The majority of the changes would be to the back of the mall and part of the middle of it.
So they're just going to take part of the back of the mall out to have greater access to the riverbank?
Yeah, so I didn't include much of the details about the site-specific one, just to focus more on the MPS amendments, but, so it's hard to describe without a visual, but yeah, there would be an opening kind of in between two sides of the existing mall to add, to create access down to the river, kind of from that parking lot, and then focus on opening up along the riverside.
It's exciting to even look at the picture. Really exciting.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Caldwell?
Just to comment, I'd like to say how exciting the project is, and I just see how it progresses.
Councillor McDonald?
If I could add, it just, something that really caught me about the design is how reflective it is of councils' plans over the years, the values of the community, the desire to create a connection between the two sides of the river and create some flow, and that active transportation connection. Obviously, they've been listening to the community and what the community has been asking for. I think that's fantastic. There's lots of comments coming in, so I'm sure that they'll be very open to those as well, but it is a very exciting plan. I agree.
I hope the green roofs stay. I noticed the green roofs on top, which is like, whenever you have a flat roof, I really think that's such a benefit, especially when it's surrounded by so much asphalt. So, those are my comments. Anyone else? Hearing none, as I'm prepared to make a motion. Councillor Thorburn, you were quick on the draw.
I would move that council of the town of Bridgewater direct staff to work on the requested amendments to the municipal planning strategy to increase the maximum height allowance of buildings on corner lots in the Le Havre Commercial C2 Zone.
I have a second, there. Deputy Mayor Fugier, for the discussion. First may call, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to 6.2 municipal planning strategy amendments to enable concurrent land use bylaw amendments for 261 York Street.
So an application was received by Harry Rhino Refrigeration Co. Limited on October 14th for a two-part application. So the first part of this application is for council to determine if they would like to entertain a redesignation of the property, from the low-density residential designation to the general commercial designation. And a redesignation is a change to the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. And then the second part would be to rezone the property from special commercial, or C8, to general commercial, C5. And a rezoning is the change to the zoning map of the land use bylaw. And this rezoning can't happen without a redesignation, because the proposed zone is not within the current designation of the property. So here's an image of the subject property located at 261 York Street. This is a view of the property and the building from York Street. The property is 0.4 acres and contains a building that used to be Landjell's Plumbing and Heating. The proposed use for this application is a custom clothing design business within the existing building. So the property is located, a few properties northeast of the York Street and Victoria Road intersection, across from Brookside Cemetery. The property is shown here on the map outlined in red. The current zoning is C8, as I mentioned. The property is adjacent to properties in the single-unit residential and institutional zone, with nearby properties in the park, comprehensive residential, neighborhood commercial, and downtown residential zones. The surrounding uses include single-unit dwellings, a 30-unit dwelling, and cemeteries. So this is an excerpt of the future land use map, which shows the designations. This map shows how council envisions areas in town to develop, and the subject property is again outlined in red there. It's located in the low-density residential designation and is adjacent to properties with low-density residential, limited commercial, comprehensive residential, and institutional designations. So the current low-density residential designation of the property is reserved for single- and two-unit residential development. This designation aims to provide protection against new land use development that is inconsistent with low-density development. The applicant is seeking a redesignation to general commercial, which permits a broad range of commercial development. It's focused along or close to arterial streets, specifically those outside of the downtown core. And the designation contains four zones, the urban commercial, group commercial, general commercial, and highway commercial zones. This map here shows the general commercial designation, so it includes all of those zones I just listed. It also shows the subject property with the star. It's located near the middle of the map, closer to the center of town. You can see the designation is focused near the edge of town, so all the darker orange, on arterial and collector streets, which lead into town. Specifically, these areas include North Street and the western portion of Aberdeen Road, the Gateway Plaza area near High Street, Dufferin Street and Dominion Street, portions of Victoria Road and Dufferin Street near the town boundary, the port of Bridgewater, and the area around Exit 12A, leading into the Bridgewater Business Park expansion area. So for zoning, the current zoning of the subject property is special commercial, which permits existing commercial uses in what is now predominantly residential areas, and it limits future changes to the use to reduce conflict. The MPS states that if existing or permitted commercial land uses are discontinued in this zone, council shall consider rezoning in accordance with the future land use map. The zones that would be in accordance with the future land use map for this property are single-unit residential and two-unit residential, not general commercial as requested. Staff are currently exploring proposed amendments to the C8 zone, as well as the neighborhood commercial, which is the C7 zone, to either rezone properties in accordance with the future land use map, rezone some properties to C7, our neighborhood commercial, if deemed appropriate, or rezone and redesignate to another zone if appropriate. And so as the subject zone is being analyzed through that process... And so as the subject zone is being analyzed through that process, this property is coming up, but the current application is a request to rezone to general commercial or C5. So that is what is being evaluated in this. So the general commercial zone is not in line with the future land use map, so that's why they've requested the redesignation as well as the rezoning. The C5 zone was included in that general commercial designation map, and it's for land uses that rely on the visibility and ease of access from high-volume traffic areas leading into town. Specifically, it's focused on the entryways into town on North Street and Dufferin Street, and to a lesser degree, Victoria Road. It's characterized by uses such as automobile dealerships, automobile repair, gas stations, equipment rental services, and drive-throughs. It permits a broad range of uses as a right, up to a maximum of about 50,000 square feet, and permits the same uses by development agreement when above 50,000 square feet. In addition to the vehicular-focused uses I mentioned, it also permits uses such as car wash facilities, emergency services, laundromats, and recycling depots. The municipal planning strategy states that the C5 zone is not conducive to residential development and living, so residential is not permitted in the zone, and it's focused on certain areas of town. So overall, the policy description of this zone is not suitable for the subject property. Although some of the uses permitted as a right in the C5 zone are suitable for the subject property, such as a clothing design business, many are not, and this needs to be considered when analyzing an application for a redesignation and rezoning, because once a property is redesignated and rezoned, any of the as-of-right uses of the zone would be permitted, not just the one being proposed for the application. Also, if the property is redesignated, it would be easier to rezone to any of the zones within the designation, not just the C5 zone which is being requested, so it's important to think of all of those. And under the general commercial designation, as I mentioned, that's the C5 zone, the C3 zone, the C4 zone, and the C9 zone. So the 3C zone is focused on a more compact and consistent commercial transition between the town's edge and center through commercial services and higher-density residential. The C4 zone looks to accommodate large-format shopping and mixed-use development in strategic locations, again, outside of the downtown core. And the C9 zone is to facilitate efficient, rapid development geared towards the traveling public in the visible areas surrounding Exit 12A. So overall, the property is not appropriate for the intent of any of these zones, nor the sought-after C5 zone. So the proposed use for this property is a custom clothing design business, and under the land use bylaw, this could be considered retail sales or a craft workshop. The current zone, the C8 zone, permits the use of retail sales, however, not for this property because the use is specifically limited to 1,000 square feet and has to be on corner lots of arterial or collector streets, which the property is not. The current zone does, however, permit the use of craft workshops, so the use being sought could be permitted without a rezoning or redesignation, but it would need a development agreement as required by the land use bylaw. And the applicant is aware of this as an option, but they're not interested in a development agreement, hence the application for the redesignation and rezoning. So the purpose of a municipal planning strategy is to provide a statement of policy to guide development of a municipality. And the Municipal Government Act states that a municipality shall not act in a manner inconsistent with a municipal planning strategy. So based on what's being presented here, the description of the general commercial designation and also the general commercial zone in the municipal planning strategy are not consistent with the subject property. So therefore, staff recommend that council refuse the requested policy change, the designation, and maintain the existing designation.
Thank you. Questions from members of council on this? Comments? Council Caldwell?
I guess I'd say I feel like our hands are tied with legislation on this, but I would encourage the applicant to apply for a permit to go with the custom clothing business in that spot because it could happen.
It would happen through a development agreement. And we'll be in contact with them about the C8 zone work that staff is working on as well.
Any other comments? I know zoning is a funny thing. There's a lot to it. It's more complex than most people realize, and so there's probably folks, and you've explained it, but there's probably folks watching, they're like, well, why don't you just make it commercial? Well, then it's every kind of commercial application, right? So because you have right now a business that's in a predominantly residential neighborhood, if you rezone it to commercial, we then can manage what commercial entity is there. And if it's something that is going day and night, or is really going to disrupt the entire neighborhood, then you've lost that control. And that is exactly the purpose of zoning, is to make sure everything kind of fits together nice and neatly. And we're seeing, you know, the results of some communities that have no zoning. And I mean, I could just think of one where the public is quite worried about something that's happening down the shore, and there's really little to no zoning, and it becomes just confusing. So I would encourage folks, if they have questions about this or other things that relate to zoning, to contact staff because they have all the information and can probably explain it a lot better than I just did. But to Council Caldwell's point, I mean, our hands are quite tied to this because if you do one thing, there's a cascading effect that can negatively impact the whole area, that whole section of town. Any other questions or comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell?
I move that Council for the town of Bridgewater refuse the requested amendment to the municipal planning strategy to redesignate the property at 261 York Street at this time and maintain the existing low-density residential designation.
Drive a seconder, seconded by Council McDonald. Further discussion? Motion denied. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to reports and recommendations, award supply of new tandem steel drum asphalt roller. You're going to talk to that? I'll just, as folks are leaving, thanks for coming. Drive safely. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Before Matt goes over the results of the procurement process, I just wanted to explain to council that this is procurement that we sought through Canoe. So if you've been to any of the NSFM conferences or seen any of their emails and news, Canoe is an organization that NSFM has partnered with, so it opens that possibility to municipalities in Nova Scotia. It's a cooperative procurement program. It has over 5,000 local government nonprofit organizations as part of its membership. And what that does is it provides access to a wide range of vendors at preferred rates. So essentially, they do the competitive procurement process for you. And what we do is when we're looking for items, we go through Canoe and provide the specifications to the vendors that are listed on their list that sell the products that we're looking for. And they've already been kind of pre-qualified by Canoe, so we don't have to go through that tendering process. They've done it for us. It is trade agreement compliant, so that is something that we'd want to make sure of. But it is not our traditional put the ad in, well, not put it in the paper, but on our website, in the provincial procurement website. What we have done is posted on our website, in our procurement area, that we may procure through Canoe. So any vendor wanting to have the opportunity to supply goods to the town would then become a member of Canoe and go through that process there. But it's not the only choice for us. We can still opt to do the traditional procurement method, which is to do tenders and RPs. But it is a new process for us, and I wanted to make sure council was aware that that is how this one has gone through. It's kind of our guinea pig to see how Canoe procurement works for the town. And as I say, it wouldn't be used in every case, but with goods that are fairly tender-specific, like with their specifications and it's fairly black and white, it's a, I guess, an efficient and effective way to procure goods. So with that, I'll throw it over to Matt.
Just a question, does the advantage of time-wise help us with efficiencies that way?
Yeah, so we don't have to go through the, well, the time of posting and the waiting for, no matter how many weeks it is that we would wait for a tender. The staff report's still there, but there isn't the, that time process and advertising and waiting for the results to come in and closing and doing that formal process. It probably cuts off, what, about a month, Matt, would you say?
Very easily, depending on how, when a tender falls, and then we're looking for an award.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. That saves me a lot of time. Thanks. So yeah, I know we're at the tail end of the 2223 fiscal budget, but including that is the purchase of a new tandem steel drum roller because as staff presented at the start of last year's budget, or this year's budget, we are doing a lot more work in-house of the small, medium paving jobs that are really hard to contract out because there's not enough real profit in for the local businesses to do those. And plus, we've gained the experience and expertise in that field now, or always have with new staff too. So TMS explains that we went through, we've drafted those specifications and we went through Canoe. We were able to get three prices in comparison of, and when we compared those with specifications, looking at warranty, the unit, and delivery, of course, we, Tormont Cat submitted the lowest price that met our specifications. And they're actually able to deliver it this fiscal year, which is really great, so one less carryover item for us. So the engineering department would recommend, given the project or the supply of goods is under budget or within, that the new tandem steel drum asphalt roller be awarded to Tormont Cat for a total cost of $59,800 HST included, or $54,228.72 net HST. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Matt, Council Thorburn?
Not a question, just a comment on that cat. It looks like we're getting a pretty good warranty too with that package. It's beyond the rest of them that I see on this document.
And that's, which is really good because I know with warranty, sometimes that is one of the concerns, where we don't get enough detail. In this case, the specifications are exceeded, and so it's great.
No, it is great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Your Worship. Move that Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award the new tandem steel drum asphalt roller to Tormont Cat for a total cost of $59,800 HST included, or $54,228.72 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. Further discussion? None. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
9.2, we have our monthly permit applications report for January 2023. So things just are not slowing down. I'm just trucking along with quite some large numbers there. So if you have any questions, reach out through the CAO to staff with additional details. And of course, for the public, these are all posted on the town's website under council agendas, and everything that's in our document package is also posted there for the public. Down to 9.3, BDO Zone Initiative: Regional Partnership Request for Support. And Mr. Brown, I see you're on the screen, so I'll take it away.
Yes, I'll share my screen in one moment. So can everyone see that?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, so this is an initiative that I've been working on with my counterparts in Chester and Lundberg and Queen's. And essentially, this Social One Economy Development Opportunities Zone Initiative, which is being pursued or sponsored by the Nova Scotia Innovation Hub in Dartmouth. So just a little background, the Innovation Hub is an accelerator. In some respects, it might be similar to FOMO, Volta Labs, and some of the other labs and projects that have been initiated in the province to foster new enterprise developments in certain sectors. So this is a particular accelerator group that's affiliated with bioeconomy. And it's more in towards both public and private sector representatives in former LECOla and Desto Scotia, Department of Natural Resources and Down Housing, those sorts of groups. It also has a number of bioeconomy, private sector partners from the forestry and other related sectors involved. And essentially, our mission is to accelerate the growing bioeconomy sector in Nova Scotia to set conditions for further investment in the sector. So the bioeconomy is a key segment of Nova Scotia's clean technology sector in addition to other areas such as energy storage, R&amp;D, and we'll come back to them in a little bit. So the hub works with these incentives, as I said, to establish new startups or growing operations. They insist in the commercialization process, in some instances, expansion, replacement of capital, and others. They're fully engaged with the goal of, in Dartmouth, it's looks like Ocean Industries Park. And they've come to us, in recent months, to talk about this bioeconomy development opportunity zone initiative, or BDO Zone Initiative, as an example of fulfilling that mission. So drawing attention to anything, to the staff report, which is a brief overview of the BDO Zone Initiative. I'll give you a little bit of additional background on the players that are involved. It's a North American, U.S. and Canada-wide initiative. And in Canada, it's being led by a firm by the name of EcoStrat, which is a 150-member industry staple and being funded by the federal government and also some of its activities by the U.S. federal government as well. So essentially, this is a certification process. It's a process to look at the bioresources of Social One Nova Scotia and conduct, essentially, compliant inventory of those bioresources and also look at the availability of other infrastructures such as highways, industrial parks, electrical capacity, those sorts of things that will factor into investment, say, in utilizing bioresources. So this process results in a certification for the region. It also results in a rating that's related to recognize risk factors in investing in the industry. And so it's essentially an industry standard in terms of those that are seeking to develop new products using that type of an input. So this provides data and information to support investment in all of those areas. And in our case, we would use it to inform our investment attraction marketing efforts as it relates to the clean technology sector, which we're truly also identifying as a priority in our development efforts as well. So again, as I said, it does support our economic growth plan in terms of the strategic directions of growing Bridgewater and the business parks expansion. It also addresses sustainable green economy. It aligns as well with investment disclosure, provincial level investment attraction priorities. And I draw attention to a PEGXB, which is a sector snapshot produced by Invest, Nova Scotia, a gold clean technology where bioeconomy is shown as a key component of that. The other thing I wanted to note with this is that this is, they're looking for letters of support only at this time. They did approach some of our neighboring units for financial assistance. Chester approved some assistance, and they do not to provide any assistance at this time. There was a follow-up presentation with Mo, by the Innovation Hub, and they've become more supportive of the initiative. Our intention, the way we negotiated collectively with the Innovation Hub is that we'd like to see them, with their resources, undertake the inventory and do the substantial work. And then upon completion of that, the sharing of that knowledge, we would then collectively be prepared to participate in some marketing activities to profile Social One as a engine for bioeconomy investment. So a final point in terms of our own work in the past on some issues. This relates somewhat to a new energy resource study which was done in 2021. We looked at various sources of renewable energy for the clean meat. Are involved in this initiative would not have the intent of changing a general thrust of recommendation. recommendation of that report, which was to pursue solar and wind options in the future community energy system. So with that, the implications of supporting, supporting the initiative, in terms of financial, at this time, would be nil. The financing and funding for this would be covered by the Innovation Hub and its, and its funding partners in the LECOla and the province of Scotia. There would be no legal implications at this time, as it's an information and certification process. And the strategic priorities that it relates to, as I mentioned earlier, for Bridgewater, development of green economy as well as our focus sector of clean technology. In terms of options, the options we would accept are recommendations provide a letter of support to the Innovation Hub to undertake the study pursuant to the BDO Zone Certification. Secondly, the second report was a further condition, funding to bring staff to gather additional information and defer any decision in the form of inter reject the recommendation. And recommendation would be to support the Innovation Hub pursuant of the certification under the bioeconomy development zone program and a letter of support.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions from council on that? See that, you know, as we open up exit 12 and lands on the other side, certainly aligns with a goal of attracting certain sectors to that area. So that's, that kind of fits in with that nicely. Not seeing any hands. Are you prepared to make a motion? Councilor Tanner?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater support the Nova Scotia Innovation Hub's pursuit of the South Shore Region's certification under the Bioeconomy Development Zone Program in the form of a letter of support.
Thank you. Jeff Seconder, Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? There are none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Greg, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Nine point four, procurement of E V half-ton trucks.
Yep.
Can I just, I'll just say, I know there's always questions when it comes to E Vs. So I'll just, I want to, at some point, there'll be a, a public report from the Chief of Police, but I, I was given some information, which I thought was very eye-opening. So I'm going to share this with the public. And that is that, so everyone knows we have a Tesla police car. We also have some SUVs. The cost to charge that Tesla for three months is the same as one of the SUVs for one day. So that's a pretty big deal. So when we looked at the projected cost savings, we are certainly on track. We may be better than on track. But I think that's just an interesting, interesting number for people to know. So we can run that car for three months for the same amount of money it is for 24 hours of running one of our SUVs. And I just want to put that out there. More information will be coming.
Yeah. So council had given some direction that they would like staff to explore or consider the purchase of electric vehicles as we retire vehicles in our fleet. So we have a, a number of vehicles in our fleet, a good number of them are trucks. And we've, we've investigated, looking at the purchase of electric vehicles, and there's, supplies an issue. So there's a long wait. And we're twelve to eighteen months, if not more, for procuring electric vehicles. Some public entities that have tried to procure electric vehicles by tender have got no submissions. And that's because they don't need, there's no supply. So it, there's effort that goes into replying to a tender. And if you don't need to go to a tender because of this supply and demand thing, then you don't get the responses. So they've chosen to look at alternative procurement in order to procure those vehicles. In terms of, and as, as the mayor indicated, the analysis on the, the cost analysis, I guess, between a traditional gas-powered or internal combustion engine vehicle and an electric vehicle, there's lots of sources of information out there to provide that to you. Halifax recently had a study done in 2021 by Dunphy Energy that provided that analysis. And, and showed that over the life of comparing a sedan, over the life of the internal combustion engine vehicle versus an electric vehicle, the gas-powered or internal combustion engine was roughly 21% more expensive. So they broke that down, looking at a vehicle with an annual mileage of 30 kilometers, the gas power we had cost of 10,000, a plug-in hybrid was 6,500, and then an electric vehicle was 4,000. So over an eight-year period, the cost for the E V would be 32,000, and the gas power would only be, so the internal combustion engine vehicle would be 80,000. So that's assuming an eight-year lifespan. So the studies have shown that they are, may cost a little bit more upfront, but they do have a lower annual maintenance cost. And that's primarily because there's fewer moving parts, less fluids and less wear on the brakes. And fuel costs, obviously, there's no fuel costs. So those are all kind of, are things that electric vehicles provide in terms of the pluses. In addition to that, there's the emissions. And E Vs over the lifetime of a vehicle have less emissions than your traditional gas-powered car. So that's a net of production, battery production, fuel production emissions. If you look at the lifetime of it, not just the production of it, but the lifetime, there's fewer emissions. And the town has set net zero targets, and converting our fleet to electric vehicles as we retire our fleet will help the town meet some of those targets as well. So we have in the budget, knowing that that was council's objective, to, to have us transition to electric vehicles as we retire them, we had two trucks. And we had one for police services and one for engineering. There's only one supplier of a half-ton truck for Atlantic Canada right now, in 2023. And that is Ford. So we've, we've looked at the vehicle, staff have seen it, we understand the specs, but we know there's one supplier and there's not a lot of supply. So a neighboring municipality has been on the waitlist for months and told it could take up 12 months to get that. There've been a couple opportunities that have risen over the past few weeks, where if we had the budget approved and the ability to do alternative procurement, we may have been able to take advantage of carrying one. One was a leftover from a larger order. And locally, there's two, two units, I believe it is, that are available. And so there's just whether or not we have the ability to get pre-budget approval so that we could lock it in, and whether or not council's agreeable to alternative procurement for this type of purchase. Staff feel that it needs the procurement policy to consider alternative procurement simply because for, there's only one supplier. And, and because it's a truck. If you're looking at a vehicle, there are more suppliers for E Vs. But for the truck, it's, it's the Ford Lightning that basically is out there. There's different models, but that's what, that's what we have at this present moment. So there's absence of competition, essentially for technical reasons. And for that reason, staff's recommendation that council consider alternative procurement for, for the trucks. And to enable us to react to the possibility of a present opportunity that we give pre-budget approval, that would enable staff to lock those in. And we're told that there would be about 12 to, I believe it's 12 to 18 week turnaround from when we ordered it to when it comes in. If we're not able to get in on that, then we're probably looking at a 12 to 18 month waiting period. And the concern that staff have with that is that usually we're retiring vehicles that are higher in, in terms of maintenance cost, and we're trying to rotate them out. And then that creates a little bit of risk when we're hanging on to a vehicle a little longer than, than we want to in terms of maintenance cost. So those are the recommendations. Of course, council can opt to not give pre-budget approval, and then we would do our normal procurement after the budget's approved. And in terms of alternative procurement, council can also elect not to do alternative procurement, at which time we would go through the public procurement process and do a tender in our fleet. We did check with canoe, and canoe said we'd have to be, like, vehicles don't make a lot of sense to purchase through them unless you're buying seven or more. And then, again, with electric vehicles, it's a supply issue.
Okay?
Yep.
Any questions? C A O, Councilor Thorburn?
Two or three, I guess. Tammy, there's no funding available for merchants from the government funding?
No, it's usually tax-free based.
Okay.
So we don't get to take advantage of that. But we will look for funding for like the chargers and stuff like that.
Sure. So it's my understanding that we can't get a three-quarter ton, which some of our staff needs.
Just a half-ton.
And my third one question is if we go with those Ford trucks, would it make sense, once we add them to the fleet, to keep adding the same vehicle to the fleet for ease of management? Or would you just put a new tender next time in need of one and take whatever tender you get?
Well, I guess that would be up to council. I think that the, believe, based on the presentation that we had, the charging unit would be the same, unless it were a Tesla. Then they have a specific, you just buy an adapter for that, right? But, yeah. So it's, maintenance is very low because there's not a lot of moving parts to it. But we would probably want to look at where you buy from, if you're selling the electric vehicle, you have to have the ability to perform maintenance on it too. So we look for stuff like that.
I know we've, we've done that in cloud pack different times, even with the S C B A, still source provided, with around one company could provide what you wanted, or we prefer, prefer. So, no, I fully support. That is the way to go.
I think, Councilor Tanner, then Councilor Thorburn?
I fully support the move to E Vs, but having learned this the hard way a couple weeks ago, are staff comfortable with the very limited range on that vehicle?
So that the half-ton truck gets 500 kilometers on a, on a battery. So that'll be, yeah, that'll be sufficient. We had C A A next ride down, and, and they've been driving the Ford Lightning now for several months.
Perfect.
But 500 kilometers in town is going to be sufficient. If you go on the highway, that drops down. My understanding is that could go down to 350. And if you're towing or anything heavy, adding more weight to it, can lower the battery as well. But we are going one vehicle at a time. And, and that is so that we can ensure that there is a comfort level with staff, as opposed to just, everything's going to be E V from this point on. So I believe Matt has earmarked it for engineering here at the office. So that would be kind of the, the test on it. And of course, the police services, they've been driving the Tesla now for some time, and they're, they're quite comfortable.
I'm sure we can return it if it doesn't live up to expectations.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not, you're not wrong with the range. Being a, like, we have very small footprint. I think it would be different if you were a very large rural unit and were driving, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kilometers back and forth the day. But for us, you know, I, I notice even in my own, that quite a significant range drop in the winter, but it's still hundreds of kilometers, even when it was minus 35 last week, with still hundreds of kilometers of range left. So, yeah, like I said, that's, if you're not leaving town, which generally our vehicles, town vehicles don't, should be an issue. Councilor McDonald?
Are these replacing three-quarter ton trucks? And if so, what's the impact on, on operations?
So police services is, is brand, brand new. So that's not replacing a truck. And engineering, Matt, were you just replacing a half-ton, or is it a three-quarter ton?
Well, having planned fully form of the idea right now, we will likely do a shuffle. So we do have, what, what trucks we do have that suit other departments' needs or other divisions. We'll be moving those over. And then as we purchase more of these, other E Vs will go to supervise your positions, because they don't necessarily have to have a huge man work-wise of towing or hauling at this point. And more than likely, those, those vehicles will reside with those employees for their lifetime, or until we get more comfortable that they can be used elsewhere. So it doesn't, it shouldn't impact operations that we're aware of right now.
So they're not going to be used, they're going to be used more by, like, in administrative manner? Is that what you mean?
So like tonight, it would be those on call who would be looking after the winter operations and traveling around there. So they still might need to be taking signs or things like that, but not necessarily hauling the plate tamper from site to site, just because there is some concern with the, the reduction on the battery itself. However, we will be able to test that once we have one to see what a half-ton will be able to be used for, whether it be within parks or public works or for engineering staff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Mayor, Councilor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater give pre-budget approval for the acquisition of two half-ton electric vehicles, truck charger, each at a cost of $110,000. And further, the council authorize alternative procurement for the purchase of these two electric vehicles.
Jeff Seconder, Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Down to R F P 2022 dash 14, Climate Lens Assessment. Padre, I feel like it's been forever since we've seen you. Lucky you.
Good evening, everyone. In December 2022, town council approved proceeding with a greenhouse gas emissions assessment, known as the Climate Lens Report, at an estimated cost of $95,000 for our 10-year wastewater capital projects that have been included in the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund application. The greenhouse gas emission assessment will review upgrades to critical wastewater infrastructure, including five pump stations, four major operating systems at the wastewater treatment plant, and a minimum of 16 storm sewer separation projects. We issued the R F P for Climate Lens, our greenhouse gas emission assessment, in late December. And on January 25th, 2023, the town received four requests for proposals to supply professional services for the design services of a Climate Lens Assessment. All four consultants submitted complete packages, and they addressed our mandatory work for this project. The successful proposals scored higher in the non-monetary and monetary categories. And it is a very competent local company that is very familiar with both the town of Bridgewater energy projects and wastewater work. And that supports our recommendation for selecting this firm. Staff are recommending to award to the consultant with the highest overall evaluation rating, C B C L Limited, with an estimated cost of $26,680 HST included, or $24,194 net HST, due to their complete proposal and experience in both categories. This estimated cost is within our 2223 repurpose budget. Are there any questions?
Questions from council? That's pretty straightforward. Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Please. Councilor Thorburn, thank you.
I move Council for the town of Bridgewater, where the request for proposals to C B C L Limited for an estimated cost of $26,680 HST included, $24,194, 35 net HST, which includes the full Climate Lens Assessment.
Thank you. Jeff Seconder, Councilor McDonald. Discussion? And all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We are down to 10.1 under Business Rising and Unfinished Business. And this is giving notice for procurement policy amendments. We're just giving notice so it will come to the February.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
The next meeting. Now, it says February 23rd, but it's.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Yeah. Or 13th, rather. So just note whoever's making the motion that the date should be February 27. Is someone prepared to make that motion a notice? Councilor McDonald?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the February 27th, 2023 council meeting, amendments to Policy 79, purchasing and tendering policy will be considered to revise the procurement thresholds as outlined in Document 23 dash 012.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Any discussion?
Question?
Question may call. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to 10.2, strategic priorities for 2023, 24. As you recall, we did discuss these.
We did discuss them. So these are the strategic priorities that are the result of a workshop that council had in early January. The priorities outline what council wishes to achieve in 2023, 24. By approving these priorities, we'll
By approving these priorities, we'll align that with council's budget and then the business plans of each department, which then filter down to the work program or work plans for individual staff members. So this is our opportunity to make sure we're aligned right from council's expectations down to the staff that are performing the work. The report notes that there are some service enhancements that these priorities would, if approved, would achieve. So those are noted as business park expansion, the marketing levy, which will be used to help fund events, affordable housing incentives, the complaint app, by law enforcement options and taxi service. And then there's also a little bit of an emphasis on organizational enhancements for the town itself through an organization review, an HR recruitment retention strategy, data governance and privacy, asset management, and the facility strategy to help us prioritize improvements to our facilities. So appended to this report, you have the chart. You have a work plan that will show you the check-in points with council, and when we come targeting, bringing these matters forward for approval, and also what the financial or budgetary implications of these items are. So the items themselves, if completed within the 2023, '24 fiscal year, would introduce an additional $685,000 into our budget. So, and those are mainly around recognizing that the internal resources aren't present to accomplish all the priorities that council have, and some of them require outside expertise to come in as well. So those items are noted there. What's being proposed tonight is that if council's in agreement with the priorities, that council can approve the priorities but refer the, I guess, the final approval or the budget implications to your budget deliberations, so you can see your entire operating budget and what that would look like and how these fit into that. Because once you see that, you may want to step back on a few things, given where the operating budget may come in at. So the recommendation is, I think, that council approve the strategic priorities as presented in principle and refer the budgetary items to budget deliberations.
Any questions on that? Now we've kind of reviewed them all already. Is someone prepared to make a motion? And I would recommend you just add that little last bit to the motion that the CIO just referred to. So whoever's prepared, Councilor McDonald?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the 2023, '24 strategic priorities as presented in document 23-025 and refer to the budget process.
Perfect. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? These moves, motion is carried. Down to new business. 11.1, Affordable Housing, Lot 102 on Glen Allen Drive.
Okay. So Lot 102 on Glen Allen Drive is 1.5 acres. It has, based on council's policy, a value of around $234,000, and it's zoned a C7. So it's got a commercial zoning attached to that. The town has been approached by the South Shore Open Doors Association to consider providing that land to the association at less than market value for a nominal amount, dollar, to enable the development of a 14-unit affordable housing project, which would be rent geared to income. They intend to, they have funding from the province to help support them in the development of this project, and they intend to apply for CMHC funding through the Rapid Housing Initiative. The deadline for that is March 15th. So this application process requires that the association have a long-term lease, so 25 years plus, or have ownership of the property. So they have confirmed that if council were interested in pursuing this project, enabling them to pursue this project by providing the land, that an agreement of purchase and sale would be sufficient to provide proof of intended ownership of the property. The site, as they indicated, is, has, gets a number of points in the CMHC application process. It's on a bus route, there's park space, HB Studios is there, the trail's there, the hospital's close, 1.3 kilometers away, and there's shopping centers for groceries and other items that it's less than, or so over a kilometer away using the trail. The council had, or staff had, the council had asked us at a discussion session to look at what we may, as a town, wish to consider if we were going to provide this land to South Shore Open Doors Association. Because it's very fast, March 15th is like a month away, and there's a lot of things that have to be kind of nailed down before you'd feel comfortable to say yes, this project's a go, and it's, there's some conditions that would have to be met. So first off, it would have to be rezoned. So you'd have to take it through that process to enable the multi-unit residential development that they're proposing. So staff can commence that process at any time, and I believe they will be coming forward at a subsequent meeting with the initiation process for that, if council's interested in looking at providing this land for an affordable housing project. Secondly, there's a need to guarantee that the project will happen. So often, when we sell land to an urbanite or an individual or a company, we put buyback provisions on the lot. So that if they buy it and they don't do what they're going to say, they don't build, we have the ability to take that back. So it's suggested that council may wish to look at, in an agreement of purchase and sale, including conditions that would ensure performance, so that you would have a buyback. We're suggesting that you'd want to look at, they're looking at triplexes, so that you would look at subdividing lots off as for triplexes. So there'd be four or five lots, triplex on each lot, and as it's built, you release the buyback on that lot, but you have the buyback going on the other lots. And that you would phase the construction terms, so that the first lot would have to have a triplex start it within two years and complete it within three years. And then the second lot would be started within three years and complete it within four, and you kind of phase it that way, so that it gives them some time to build and gives you the ability to take back the land if it's not done, it's not completed. You'd also want to look at having some type of assurances that it would remain affordable. So often, at the provincial level, when they provide funding, there's like a 10-year agreement or requirement on the property that they have to keep it affordable in order to get the grant. So we may want to look at satisfying ourselves in some way that there would be performance provisions that would ensure it stayed affordable in the long term, given the value of the land at $234,000. They'd also need to, you'd want to ensure that they had all permits and permissions, you'd want to ensure that they had a business case that had, and that that was presented to you, that showed that it was fully funded, the capital, like, so they had all the money locked down to build it. And then they had a long-term sustainable operating proposal for how it would be operated, so that you could be assured that it would be able to remain affordable because there was a plan in place for how it would be operated in a sustainable manner, and that all those terms would be included in the agreement of purchase and sale and our subsequent agreements that our legal counsel may suggest, and that those terms would have to be satisfied in order to convey the land to them for a dollar. If council wishes to convey the land for a dollar, there is, or a nominal amount, there is a process that is required to follow under the municipal government act. So you can give land for a nominal value to a nonprofit organization, provided that they're going to be providing a service or that you may otherwise be required to fund or provide. And council's indicated that affordable housing is a priority and something that they want to try to, you want to try to incentivize. So it needs that test, but you do have to have a public meeting, a public hearing, because it is public land and you would be selling it for considerably less than market value. And that after that public meeting, then council could pass a motion to provide it, assuming that after that public meeting, you still deem it advisable to do so. So at this point, what staff is suggesting is that if council's interested in that, there's still a lot to work out, as you can tell from all the conditions and stuff that we're suggesting be drafted up and put into a purchase and sale agreement, but that you start the process to sell for less than market value. So that would be agreeing to have staff begin the process under Section 51 of the Municipal Government Act, schedule that public meeting to hear and present to the public the proposal to sell the Lot 102 to SODA for a nominal value of a dollar to be used for affordable housing, and that that would be subject to conditions which are further defined and approved by council prior to conveyance. So that would give us some time to draft that up and bring that back in the way of a formal agreement for council to agree to.
Questions? Councilor Tanner?
So mid to late November, I raised the RHI opportunity with the executive director of SODA. At that time, the response was, we don't qualify. So what has changed?
They've got, well, one, I think land is one part of it, so they had to own the land. They've got funding from the province to help them proceed with this application. So they're, my understanding is they're getting ready to go through an RFP process right now to have solicit developers. So they're looking at modular-type units. So they, I believe that may have been part of their barriers, that they just didn't have that behind them.
I wonder if, I don't know when the date that this changed, but there were changes to the Rapid Housing Initiative for developments that were directly on a transit route, and I know that it opened up more funding, but I feel like it was probably before you asked the question, so I don't, I don't know for sure. But I do know that there were changes to that. The funding pot was increased for that, maybe some of the conditions.
So I assume the conveyance would be conditional upon successfully achieving?
Yeah, well, one of the, one of the suggested conditions is that they present to council that plan that shows all the funding committed to the project, so that you're not conveying land and they've still got 10 million to nail down.
Yeah, and at the end of it, there is still buyback agreement. So even if something falls through, there still needs to be those performance clauses in place.
I guess that was exactly my question, the buyback and the terms with that, yeah.
Yeah, because there needs to be that assurance for council that the project actually gets completed.
And that's why we're suggesting you look at subdivision as well, so subdivide them off by lots, and as they get built, you can release it on that lot and you still have it on future ones instead of just the entire parcel.
Councilor Conklin?
The value of 234,000, is that based on the current zoning or the proposed zoning?
That's based on your policy that sets out so much per square foot and frontage on Glen Allen. So you have a policy that sets out the rate, and so that's just multiplying frontage and area by those numbers. So it's not based, not a highest and best use type of value. It hasn't been appraised in that manner. We are in the process of getting some appraisal work done on land in the Glen Allen area, some of the town-owned land that the town has. This wasn't included in that, but it could also provide a basis, but it might be too late in the game. And given that they're asking a dollar for it, that was the value staff grabbed, it was what you had in the policy for Glen Allen.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make, oh, do you have a question, Councilor Call? Yep.
Just one question. Would the agreement be expected to include that the applicant would pay for any additional charges that may be borne by the town, such as wastewater, et cetera?
Yeah. So that was something that we had discussed with the applicant, to basically say that, you know, this is, it's high-value land that would be provided to you, and it'd be the expectation that you would pay better than charges and any permit application fees. And property taxes would still be applicable to the property, too, unless council provided the property tax exemption. But there are a lot of other developments with affordable units in them, and those tax exemptions haven't been applied. So those are things that they'll be made aware of, and may be expected to do all of that.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that council of town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin the process under Section 51 of the Municipal Government Act, MGA, including scheduling a public hearing during their regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:00 PM on February 27th, 2023, to sell Lot 102 on Glen Allen Drive, PID 60658580, to the South Shore Open Doors Association, SODA, for the nominal sum of $1,000, to be used for affordable housing, subject to conditions which are to be further defined and approved by council prior to conveyance.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Any questions? Yep. Yep, no, no.
So will we, will the public be aware of those conditions prior to that meeting?
We'll have them, we'll have them noted, like, we might not have them in legal form.
Sure.
But yeah, yeah, we'll make sure that they're aware that these conditions would be attached to that.
It would be, it would be in our agenda package prior to that meeting, right? An agenda package would be made properly. Yeah, that's a good point. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. With the weather outside, it's good that we are now at the end of our meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Councilor McDonald. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.